Good evening, everybody, and welcome to this meeting of Troy City Council, our first meeting of 2021. At this time, I ask you to please silence all of your cell phones. We'll begin with the invocation of the Pledge of Allegiance this evening, given by Mayor Odom. Please rise.
Let's pray. Lord, we gather tonight for the first council meeting of 2021, and we just pray that you would grant us wisdom as we meet the challenges that will surely come our way this year. Give us discernment in making decisions, big and small. Give us thankful hearts and help us to see the blessings in our lives every day. We also hold our government nationally and locally in prayer as we enter this new year, and we just pray for your blessings on this community and its residents, Lord, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, and every God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Assistant to you at the flag plate.
I was waiting.
Thank you, Mayor. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Allen. Mr. Twiss.
Here.
Mr. Phillips.
Here.
Mr. Rozell.
Here.
Mr. Schilling.
Here.
Mr. Swazer.
Here.
Mr. Seaver.
Present.
Mrs. Snead.
Here.
Mr. Twilliger.
Here.
Motion to excuse Mr. Allen.
It has been moved to excuse Mr. Allen by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Swazer. Will you please call the roll?
Mr. Twiss.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mrs. Snead.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Allen is excused.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read a summary of the minutes of the December 21st, 2020, meeting of council?
Minutes of council, December 21. Committee reports, Community and Economic Development Committee recommended that ordinance number 052-2020 zoning be approved. Community Partnerships Committee recommended that legislation be prepared granting a right-of-way and easement to DP&L associated with the new construction of Lincoln Center. Committee also recommended legislation be prepared authorizing an amendment to the lease between the city and the CIC related to Lincoln Community Center. Personnel Committee reported regarding a number of appointments and reappointments to boards and commissions as recommended by the mayor, and all were approved. Resolution number R76-2020, declaring necessity, Phase 13 Sidewalk Replacement Program, first reading and adopted. Ordinance number 052-2020, changing a zoning of a parcel was given, third reading and adopted. Ordinance number 059-2020, execute a right-of-way with Dayton Power and Light Company was given first reading and adopted. Ordinance number 060-2020, amending the lease regard with Lincoln Center with the Community Improvement Corporation was given first reading and adopted, following various comments. Council adjourned at 7:23 PM.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. We'll entertain a motion.
Is it approved?
Second.
It has been moved by Mr. Swazer to approve the minutes of the December 21st meeting, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mrs. Snead.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Twiss.
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. We have a number of committee meeting, committee reports this evening. We will begin with the Community and Economic Development, and Mrs. Snead.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Community and Economic Development Committee met on December 28th to consider the recommendation forwarded from the Troy Planning Commission that council should approve the revised final record plan for the Troy Christian Schools Education and Performing Arts Facility Plans Development Residential. This will be the final step of a major revision of a plan development that started when council approved ordinance number 044-2020, which revised the general plan. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared accepting the revised final record plan of the Troy Christian Schools Education and Performing Arts Facility Plans Development Residential, as recommended by the Troy Planning Commission. And this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Rozell, Mr. Twiss, and myself as chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Snead. Do any council members have any comments or questions on the report? Seeing none, we will move on to the Community Partnerships Committee and Mr. Rozell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This committee met on December 28th to consider recommending the legislative items required to establish a property assessment clean energy face program to finance energy efficient and renewable energy projects. This program established by state law is an additional economic development incentive tool to help businesses and industries make qualifying physical improvements to a property which create energy savings and to finance the improvements and pay back the cost of the improvements through a special assessment added to the property tax over a period of between 15 and 25 years. It is recommended, recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared to establish a pace program, including an energy special improvement district, and approve the application for 22-24 to 226 South Market Street. The committee also supports emergency legislation so that the program can be established and submitted application approved. This is respectfully submitted by Zachary Allen, John Swazer, and myself as chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Rozell. Do any council members have any comments or questions on the report?
I just have, want to clarify that what we covered in the committee meeting. As far as when we establish this district, this ESI district, the property owner is on the, on that overseeing board and two of his appointees. And then if we have a second application, which we can take, make the district citywide, is that same board over all pace programs? Okay, is there any?
It's not pace program. It's pace project.
Project.
Same program.
Is there any term limits to that? I mean.
That would be established through whatever operating guidelines the board creates for itself.
Okay. And who, who determines the 15 to 25 year repayment? Is that the cost of loan or?
No, that's the, that's at the.
County level?
The borrower.
Okay.
Their discretion.
Okay. That's it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Rozell. Any other comments or questions from council members? Seeing none, we'll move on to the Finance Committee and Mr. Swazer.
Yes, we have one committee report tonight. On December 28th, this committee met to consider recommending the subordination of an existing loan from the Small Business Development revolving loan fund, SBD, for RNE LLC and Greenville Federal Bank. The temporary subordination of the second position liens will allow the company to purchase an additional industrial building, make improvements, and conserve cash. This does not commit any additional city funding, and the city will continue to be more of, more than sufficiently secured for the loan. This committee recommends that legislation be prepared authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to execute a subordination loan agreement for R+ RNE LLC as requested by the company and the bank. So that the subordination process can be completed and the company's expansion plans proceed as soon as possible, the committee supports emergency legislation. And this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Phillips, Mr. Seaver, and myself as chair.
Thank you, Mr. Swazer. Do any council members have any comments or questions on this report? Seeing none, we will end up with an oral report from Law and Ordinance Committee and Mr. Swazer.
I'm Mr. Seaver.
Notice has been received by the High Division of Liquor Control of the following applications: A new D3A permit for A&amp;R Troy LLC, Agave and Ride, 2 North Market Street, to extend issued permit privileges until 2:30 AM. The company currently holds D1, D2, D3, and D6 permits. The second is a transfer of three existing C1, C2, and D6 permits from the name of Road Pop Stop, Inc., 1265 South Dorset Road, to KKA LLC, DBA Dorset Pop Stop of the same address. The Police Department has not recommended an objection or hearing request for either application.
Thank you, Mr. Seaver. Any comments or questions from council members on the oral report? Seeing none, we will open the meeting up to public comments on the two resolutions and five ordinances that we have up for deliberation this evening. If you wish to speak, please come to the lectern, give your name and address. You have two minutes to speak, and Mr. Kirby will be our timekeeper. Seeing none, we'll move on to resolutions. Mrs. Knight, will you please read Resolution R1, 2021?
Resolution number R1, 2021, a resolution approving petition, plan, and articles of incorporation with Troy Energy Special Improvement District, and declaring the necessity of acquiring, constructing, and improving certain public improvements in the city of Troy, Ohio, in cooperation with the Troy Energy Special Improvement District, and declaring an emergency. This is the first reading.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. House Counselors, Jack.
May this suspend.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Seaver, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mrs. Snead.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Twiss.
I would like to recuse myself from the vote, as I have a family relation to the applicant.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. I believe the three reading rule has been suspended.
Moved to adopt.
It has been moved to adopt the resolution by Mr. Swazer, seconded by Mrs. Snead. Are there any final comments or questions on the item before we prepare to vote? Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mrs. Snead.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Twiss.
Will recuse myself from voting due to family relation.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read Resolution R2, 2021?
Resolution number R2, 2021, resolution authorizing the sale during calendar year 2021 of municipally owned personal property which is not needed for public use or which is obsolete or unfit for the use for which it was acquired by internet auction pursuant to Highway 5's Code Section 721.15P. This is a piece of legislation that's required on an annual basis, first reading.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. House Counselors, Jack.
May this suspend.
It has been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Rozell and seconded by Mr. Swazer. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mrs. Snead.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Twiss.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
The three reading rule has been suspended.
Moved to adopt.
It's been moved to adopt the resolution by Mr. Swazer, seconded by Mr. Twiss. Are there any final comments or questions before we prepare to vote? Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mrs. Snead.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Twiss.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Moving on to ordinances, Mrs. Knight, will you please read ordinance 01, 2021?
Ordinance number 01, 2021, ordinance determining to proceed with the acquisition, construction, and improvement of certain public improvements in the city of Troy, Ohio, in cooperation with Troy Energy Special Improvement District and declaring an emergency. This is related to Resolution R1, 2021. This is the first reading.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. House Counselors, Jack.
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Seaver. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Snead.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Twiss.
I will recuse myself due to family relation.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
The three reading rule has been suspended.
Moved to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved to adopt the ordinance by Mr. Swazer, seconded by Mr. Twilliger. Any final comments or questions before we prepare to vote? Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Twiss.
Will recuse as stated previously.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mrs. Snead.
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read ordinance 02, 2021?
Ordinance number 02, 2021, ordinance loving special assessments for the purpose of acquiring, constructing, and improving certain public improvements in the city of Troy, Ohio, in cooperation with Troy Energy Special Improvement District approving a energy project cooperative agreement and a special assessment agreement and declaring emergency. This is also associated with Resolution R1, 2021, and ordinance number 01, 2021, first reading.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. House Counselors, Jack.
Move for suspension.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Seaver, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Twiss.
I'll recuse myself once again due to family relation.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mrs. Snead.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
The three reading rule has been suspended. House Counselors, Jack.
Can we ask if their family relations are Steelers fans as well? Because this is the last time we're going to vote on one of these things.
No.
Okay.
You want to find out who favors Todd or?
It's been moved to adopt the ordinance by Mr. Seaver, seconded by Mr. Phillips. Are there any further comments or questions before we vote? Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mrs. Snead.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Twiss.
Will recuse myself.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read ordinance 03, 2021?
Ordinance number 03, 2021, ordinance accepting the revised final record plan of the Plan Development Residential at 700 South Dorset Road for the Troy Christian Schools Education and Performing Arts Facility. It has been recommended for approval by the Troy Planning Commission and is going to perform with the previously approved general plan, first reading.
Move for suspension.
Second.
It has been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Twiss. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mrs. Snead.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Twiss.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Moved to adopt.
Second, the three reading rule has been suspended, has been moved to adopt the ordinance by Mr. Twiss and seconded by Mr. Twilliger. Are there any final comments or questions before we prepare to vote? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mrs. Snead.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Twiss.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read resolution, I mean ordinance, 04, 2021?
Ordinance number 04, 2021, ordinance subordinating a mortgage lien for RNE LLC and declaring an emergency. This was discussed by the committee report and is the first reading.
House Counselors, Jack.
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Schilling and seconded by Mr. Seaver. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mrs. Snead.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Twiss.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Move for adoption. Second.
The three reading rule has been suspended. It's been moved to adopt the ordinance by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Swazer. Any final comments or questions before we prepare to vote? Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mrs. Snead.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Twiss.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Moving on to the final ordinance of the night, Mrs. Knight, will you please read ordinance 05, 2021?
Ordinance number 05, 2021, ordinance to accept the application for the annexation of certain territory containing 3.714 acres, more or less, in Concord Township and the city of Troy, Ohio. This parcel is known as the Ferryman-Cover Annexation. It was previously approved by city council, has now been approved by the Board of County Commissioners and returned to the city, first reading.
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Rozell. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Snead.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Twiss.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved to adopt the ordinance by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Swazer. Are there any final comments or questions before we prepare to vote? Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Twiss.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mrs. Snead.
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Moving on to communications and announcements this evening, Mayor Odom.
Happy New Year. We're hoping for a really good 2021. May it be better than 2020. And that's it.
Thank you, Mayor. Director of Public Service and Safety, Mr. Titterington.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome.
Just a couple of things to highlight from matters of interest. It is that time in here. We pick up continues. We are in the third round, and we anticipate being done weather permitting by the end of January. We are picking up live, I guess they're not live anymore, but Christmas trees, in other words, non-artificial trees, as long as they're free of decorations. If they just put it to the curb, then we will mulch them and compost them. And then third, we are, our next council meeting is actually on a Tuesday, the 19th, because the 18th is Martin Luther King Day, and city offices are closed. However, we will be picking up trash and recycling on the normal schedule. There will not be delays. That's all I have, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Titter. Director of Law, Mr. Kirby, do you have anything to add this evening?
I don't have anything to offer. Thank you.
Thank you. Good to see you. Mr. Friggy, our auditor is not here. Any council members have anything that they'd like to add this evening? Any members of city staff in the audience have anything that they'd like to add this evening? Seeing none, we'll open it up to audience comments. If you're in the audience, you have something to say, please come forward, give your name and address, and take as much time as you wish to consume.
I will make this clear. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I have trouble with the mask. Thank you for taking your time to listen to me, Madam Mayor, President of Council, council members and staff.
Pardon me. Can we have your name and address, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Doug Page, 421 South Plum Street.
Thank you.
While walking through downtown and passing the city building, I noticed there was a sign outside the engineering planning office. It expressed some very nice sentiments. However, there was one thing that made me stop. We are in the middle of a public health crisis. Back in July, we started the year with 455 people infected with the COVID-19 virus. As of today, 7,872 county units in Miami County are infected. are infected. That puts a second in a nine-county area for infections per hundred thousand. Second, at one point, our zip code four five seven, four five three seven three was in the top five for infections per thousand, per hundred thousand. Now, the sign on the public building, it was not on the entrance to City Hall, but it was on the building to the left, that portion of City Hall, expressed some wonderful sentiments. But one said the building was open to everyone regardless of their ability to wear a mask. Well, of course it is. However, isn't this a mixed message that we're sending? Anyone can say, I can't wear a mask. The Constitution, excuse me, Declaration of Independence gave us three unalienable rights: life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness. I find it interesting that life is first. Without life, there's not much chance of having any liberty, and certainly not pursuit of happiness. Now, this is the second time we've had something like this appear on a city building, a publicly owned building. I'm wondering if it's the city's intent to send this kind of mixed message. I don't know. Have you talked to the public health professionals? Have you talked to the city attorney? I just wonder why we have that sign with that particular message. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Page. Mr. Tidrington or the mayor, does this deserve a response?
The sign was up for about ten hours.
It was up this, today.
No, it wasn't.
No.
It was up over the weekend.
Five o'clock today, it was up.
It was up yesterday.
We'll look into it.
Make these decisions.
We'll look into it, see if it's still there. It wasn't supposed to still be there.
Why was it there?
Any other residents wish to come up and speak? Please come forward, give your name and address, and take as much time as you wish to consume.
Mr. President.
Mr. Twilliger? I'm unaware of this sign. What was it implying, stating, suggesting, or just talking about specific issues? I'm unaware that it was up and what it's about.
Now, the sign, the sign that was placed says something to the effect that, welcome to City Hall, we are open for business. We, for the safety of our employees as well as the public, we are requiring masks. However, if you're unable to wear a mask, you're still welcome to come in. That's, that's in a nutshell what it says.
I think the sign that Mr. Page is referring to, it's on several businesses downtown, and that's up to the businesses. I don't care about that. It says on top, it says, stop, you're welcome here regards to the following: ability or inability to wear facial covering, religious beliefs, political affiliation, socioeconomic status. Then we have required to enter kindness and consideration for others while inside despite the above. And then it says, please remember, you have never walked a day in someone else's shoes. And down at the bottom has a logo from the state of Ohio.
Several of the stores were using that sign.
Okay. Is that the sign you're referring to?
The sign I'm referring to.
Okay.